Maybe this is successive of the safety council.
Oh, this oath with my address on it.
With my address?
My name, your address. I do not live with you.
All right. Everybody ready? Here we go. I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 25th meeting of the Lincoln City Council. Let us all rise for a pledge of allegiance, followed by a pause, silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
In accordance with L.B. 898, a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber. The order of the business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call each item listed on the agenda under public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on an item should come forward after the clerk reads that item. The applicant and those in favor should speak first, and those in opposition, then those in opposition. The applicant may then make a short rebuttal statement. Each speaker will begin by stating their name, address, and whether they are speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony will be limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the city council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last meeting of the month, immediately prior to the adjournment, anyone may speak on any issue not on the agenda for that date, nor planned for a future agenda. Would the clerk please call the first item of business today?
Yes, before we start, I have a couple announcements. Due to the Fourth of July holiday, city council will not meet on Monday, July 2nd. And then our regularly scheduled meeting for Monday, July 30th will now begin at 2:30 P.M. This is for hearing on our city budget. Our first item of business is our public hearing consent agenda, items one through three. Does anyone wish to come forward for these items? If not, we can vote on these items. Items one A and B were introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Roy, a second by Carl. Any discussion from the council? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Items one C and two A through E were introduced by Eskridge.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Carl and a second by Roy. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are public hearing liquor resolutions. Those giving testimony are asked to come forward, raise their right hand for the clerk to administer the oath. After the oath, witnesses shall state their names and addresses, and please spell your name as well. I'll call the first two items. They are items four A and B, the application of poor craft beer and spirits for a Class C K liquor license at 4400 South 70th Street, Suite 100, and the related manager application of Timothy...
Olerking.
Olerking, thank you.
That's a good name. Is someone here to speak for this item? Please come forward, and there are two microphones you guys can split up, and please sign in.
Okay.
You can always sign after you speak, too.
Very good.
It's okay, let him finish. Put your raised your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
I do.
Thank you. Just state your names and addresses.
My name is Josh Fiedler, 1215 Arapahoe Street, number 223.
My name is Tim Olerking, 817 North 59th Street, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68505.
Please tell us a little bit about your application.
Absolutely.
What brings you here today?
We are hoping to get a liquor license for poor craft beer and spirits. We're going to be located at 4400 South 70th Street, basically at 70th and Pioneer's here in town. We're going to have 24 taps of craft beer, and then some high-end spirits that will serve either neat on the rocks or with some filtered water. A limited selection of high-end cocktails and wines as well, which we'll switch out regularly. We'll have a Crowler, Growler, Crowler endorsement, so we can do off sale as well, and bottle off sale as well.
Are there other questions from the council? Roy, will you have any food service there?
We will not. We will welcome people to bring in whatever food they would like.
Other questions, anyone else to testify on this item? Thank you.
Thank you.
Teresa, would you call our next item?
Yes, next would be items four C and D. They're the application of Coen Japanese BBQ and Sushi for a Class I liquor license at 2601 Jamie Lane, Suite 100, as well as the related manager application. Would you raise your right hands? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you. Just state your name and address.
My name is Brian, 7410 Hidden Valley Drive, Lincoln, Nebraska.
My name is Hyang Suk Kim, H.Y.A.N.G., last name is Kim K.I.N.
Thank you.
Welcome. Tell us a little bit about your application.
Yes, we are hoping to get liquor license for the new location. It is called Coen Japanese BBQ and Sushi. So we try to bring Japanese-style BBQ Smokey's Grill in Lincoln, Nebraska. So we do serve Japanese-style BBQ never had before in Lincoln. And I hope you guys enjoy them when we open. Yes. Thank you. Yes.
Are there other questions from the council?
Have you had the responsibility time? Have you gone through the post-responsibility?
The manager training? Have you attended? Okay.
Yes. Is anyone else who would like to testify on this item? Thank you for coming forward.
You're welcome, thank you, sir.
Teresa, what's next on our agenda?
All right, next are items five E and F. They're the application of Chamberlins for a Class C liquor license at 2801 Pine Lake Road, Suite H, as well as the related manager application.
You said five E.
I'm sorry, four E and F.
Wait for the South Park.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be? Thank you. Just state your name and address.
Mike Figueroa, 7031 South 33rd Street, Lincoln, Nebraska. Figueroa is F.I.G.U.E.R.O.A.
Justin Chamberlain, 9101 South 53rd.
Gentlemen, thanks for coming forward. Tell us about your application.
It's the old Barvino location at 28th and Pine Lake. Similar, because what we're doing there is basically just a small pub that I think the previous owner had kind of found a niche for, and we're hoping with our experience that we'll be able to make it successful.
Are there other questions from the council? Is anyone else who would like to testify on this item? Okay, thank you very much for coming forward. We appreciate it. Teresa, what is our next one?
Our next one are items four G and H, application of Das House for a Class I liquor license at 1640 O Street, and the related manager application. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you.
State your name and address.
Tell us your name and addresses.
Adam Norris, 541 Surfside Drive, Apartment 169, 68528.
Michael Bland, 1815 Longview Street, Apartment 204, Papillion.
Thanks for coming, guys. Tell us a little bit about your application.
Go ahead.
Multitasking, write and talk, it's the same.
So we're taking over what was 1640 Event Center and going to do Das House, which would be like a Europe-themed nightclub-type thing.
It'll be a lounge and cabaret.
Lounge and cabaret. And it'd be like a WGTQ theme, so.
Safe environment for everyone.
Are there other questions from the council?
Happy no food.
So 1640, is that at the corner there of 17th?
Mm-hmm. Suit three, technically.
Yeah, northwest corner.
Yep.
Now, is this your first venture? You said you were from Papillion, if I understood correctly.
Yeah, I just moved up there last year.
Have you had experience?
Yeah, we also own Main Street Cafe.
Oh, okay.
Here in Lincoln.
Are there other questions from the council? Anyone else would like to testify on this item?
Mr. Chair, I'd move approval of items four A through four H.
Thank you, gentlemen. Second.
Thank you.
We have a motion by John and a second by Roy. Is there any discussion on these motions?
What was the motion?
Motion approval.
Oh, yes, I vote to approve all that.
Does that include the recommended condition, or is that a part of the resolution?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So it's a motion by John and a second by Roy on all items and the recommended conditions. Is any additional discussion? Teresa, would you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then are public hearing resolutions. We would ask those giving testimony to please clearly state your name and address and to sign in on the sign-in sheet laying on the podium. Our first item is five A, accepting a new report of new impending claims against the city for the period of June 1st through the 14th.
Is there anyone here to testify on this item? Seeing no one coming forward, Teresa, can we go to the next item?
All right, next is item five B, approving an interlocal agreement between the city, Lower South Natural Resources District and Lancaster County for a joint improvement project at the Old Cheney Bridge across Salt Creek in Wilderness Park.
Thank you.
Hello, council. I'm Brian Kramer. I'm with Lincoln Waste Water. And this agreement is very similar to one you approved back in November of last year. It was, that was just an agreement between the city, Watershed, and the NRD for the creek crossing on Pioneer's Boulevard. And this one is up at Old Cheney with the bridge. It also has the county involved. They have some bridge protection that they need to do. Lincoln Waste Water, which is me, we have the sanitary sewer that we want to put in on the north side of Old Cheney. And right where we cross the creek, we need to install a siphon. And then Watershed and the NRD also want to protect that part of the bank. If you've been out there recently, you can see where the creek is actually starting to come back towards the roadway and starting to mine that direction. So anyway, we have a confluence of all of our projects joining up together in the same timeframe. So we've kind of joined forces to do this project as one.
Are there, ooh, everybody's saying, Larry and then Carl?
I will mention I have David Potter here with the NRD if we have questions for them directly.
I was just curious, Mr. Kramer, what the bridge protection work is and involves that the county is responsible for.
If you, with the big storms we've had a couple years ago, if you go underneath the bridge, there was kind of a trail through there. A lot of that has eroded, and the abutments for the bridge are becoming in danger of further erosion. And so they're gonna do some bank protection in there, and it's just pretty much a wall of dirt right now. And so it's very susceptible to further erosion. So they're gonna kind of armor that with rock and some other material.
Thank you.
Carl?
Yes, I'm interested in the reason for the wastewater work that you're doing.
Oh, sure. Well, its development occurring on the west edge of Lincoln. Wilderness Park, you know, is a mile wide and very long, and we haven't come across it with sanitary sewer yet. So this is our first four-way, or first time through the park along Old Cheney so that the southwest village development can occur, which is over by Folsom and Old Cheney. And there's an annexation agreement that's being put together that will eventually come before you guys that's for that annexation.
Very good. Glad to hear that.
Are there other questions from the council? Is anyone else who would like to testify on this item? Hearing none. Teresa, I think we can go into voting on these items?
Yes, we can. Item five A, the report of new impending claims. You'll see, I did hand out, I'm sorry, this was introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
Teresa?
I did pass out a motion to amend number one.
Wanted to make sure we had the motion to amend on those.
I move motion in amend number one on lines nine and 10. The claims of Josiah Dollman and Paul T. Pribble should be removed from the list of denied claims.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Roy and a second by Cindy. A motion to amend? Now, there was already a motion and second by Roy and Larry, and is this, this is a different motion, or this is the same?
This is the second motion for the motion to amend.
So we're working on the motion to amend first.
Right, the first motion I requested was just to put the item on the floor.
And there was a motion by Roy and a second by Larry.
Correct.
And now the motion to amend.
Yes.
Is there any discussion of the motion to amend? Cindy?
Sure. So we received just communication from these folks that they were not in the country to testify, and so we're just taking it off so it can come up before us. July 30th, I think, is the date that it was, will come up again in front of us, so, just so the public knows.
Okay, any additional discussion on the motion to amend? Hearing none? Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Now, the original motion, which was motion by Roy and second by Larry to accept, to approve this resolution. Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen? Motion carried, seven to zero. Next is item five B, the agreement with LPS NRD and Lancaster County, introduced by Christensen.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Roy and a second by Carl. Is there any discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then, we have no public hearing ordinances second reading, so that would conclude our public hearing, and we can move into the voting session. Ordnances third reading, item seven A is approving an amendment to the 11th NP Hotel and Lincoln Commercial Club redevelopment agreement, adding hotel rooms to the second floor, paving the east to west alley adjacent to the project, installing additional improvements in the public right-of-way, and increasing the TIP, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion by John and a second by Jane. Is there a discussion of this? John? Thank you.
Is Mr. Landis here? Oh, okay, Hallie. Yes, Ms. Salem.
Hallie Salem, Urban Development Department.
Yes, I had a question. An individual that's in the vicinity of this project had emailed us and mentioned something about a challenge with the water supply and sanitary sewers in this area. And so I was just wondering if this has been included in this project to ensure that the hotel will have adequate services for both water and wastewater, as well as the surrounding properties?
This is not something we've heard about before. We did look into water and wastewater to determine if there was any need to do improvements, and there were none identified at the time in cooperation with Public Works. So I would wonder if this is a new, or if this just wasn't something reported before?
I'm not sure about that. It was a very quick email, but it was from a gentleman who's an architect and who has a residence right next door.
Mm-hmm. It wasn't something we had heard before, something that we looked into, but it just didn't come up to us. So we can certainly look into it, but it wasn't included in the redevelopment agreement as a potential improvement. I'm wondering if it's something that could be remedied just by roto-rooter, or?
I have no idea. I am somewhat perplexed because I've known this individual for many years. As I said, he's an architect, and so.
Right.
Living there at...
Well, I guess my question is for John. Are they concerned about the capacity of the addition of the residencies and the hotel itself?
If I recall correctly, it was both on the water supply and the sanitary sewer. And of course, with adding, what, 37 units there in the hotel. And he said there've been problems in the past, so I'm not sure about that. And I don't know what to do here on this. Obviously, if it's more than roto-rooter, it's, it'd be a serious item here.
Yeah, and I would think.
There'd be a lot to be done with this.
I would think if it causes problems for one individual, it would cause problems for everybody in the vicinity, including the hotel. So I would think that they would want to remedy that as well. But I have been in conversations with the person you're talking about, and this is the first I've heard of that.
Okay. Not sure what to do. I know they're in progress on the project, but I think there definitely needs to be communication, and if there is a real problem, we need to remedy it, and then does some of that come out with the tip?
I think we could facilitate some discussions. At this point in it, I don't know that we would renegotiate an agreement without a lot of exploration. And I would hesitate to hold this up without, as I said, there were opportunities prior to this to have that discussion. I would hesitate to hold up the financing and the project moving forward without additional detail. But we could certainly facilitate a discussion with the adjacent properties developer to do some exploration of what the issues are.
Yeah, it sounds like something needs to be proactively done just to protect the hotel and its new development.
Everybody.
Because if that's a problem, then, and that's, a lot of that's been vacant for quite a few years.
Exactly.
Carl has some questions, and then Jane?
Yeah, I had not seen that, or didn't catch my eye, anyway, so. But that's something that, working with Public Works, that we could see what the capacity is there, and if there are any issues that wouldn't need to be addressed, and those would need to be addressed, anyway. And I was just, I wasn't gonna ask you anything. It was just comment time.
Yeah.
And this, you know, this is a project that has been in progress now for approximately a year. And it's something that this amendment to the project is, only I think makes it better, better, more efficient use of the property that's available to them. And when we had the original hearing on it, one of the big concerns we had is downtown alleys are difficult, and this actually makes improvements to that alleyway. So I'm pleased and supportive of the changes that they're proposing.
Yeah, I have the email in front of me. It just mentions that the project connects to Key Place Parking Garage, and it has waiting lists, and also connects to a sewer line that is over capacity.
Jane, you had some comments?
No, it's just another comment on that.
Are there other comments or questions regarding this item? This is a good thing. Larry?
I think it's just another example of how downtown is reshaping itself, that the investments that the private sector's made, the public sector has made, are reaping benefits for the community as a whole. And now, you know, another hotel suggests that more people are interested, that there's a market for more visitors to our community, and that we'll get a more active use of these spaces downtown. I intend to support it.
Others? Thank you. I think this is the voting item right? Please call the roll?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next is item...
Madam Clerk, if we could, if you could report back to us what you find on that, I'd appreciate it. Just for all parties concerned, and might alert the hotel folks as well that there's a concern in that vicinity.
Thank you. Teresa, next item, please.
Next is item seven B, amending the fiscal year 1718 CIP to authorize and appropriate up to an additional $2,599,454 in TIP funds for the project, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by John and a second by Carl. Is there discussion? Seeing none, would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then is item seven C, authorizing amendments to ordinance 20485, approved May 1st, 2017, authorizing tax allocation bonds for the project, introduced by Camp.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion by John and a second by Jane. Discussion? Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylor Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Show?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero. Next then, we have one resolution for action only. It is supporting the continuation of a policy of deferring deportation of Dreamers so they can continue to legally work and study in this country, introduced by Raybold and Show. So moved.
Madam, I'm going to relinquish the gavel at this time to the vice chair of the council. I'd like to make a motion on this item.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor. Moved by Jane Raybold?
There wasn't a second. I'll second it.
Oh, thank you.
There wasn't a second.
No.
That's right.
Yeah.
Seconded by Eskridge. Any discussion?
I'd like to make, I'd like to make a motion to withdraw this item.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to withdraw the item by Councilman Show, second by Mr. Christensen. Any discussion?
I have a staff question.
Well, we...
I'd like to speak to my motion.
Yes, thank you.
This has been tough for me, and I want to say thank you for everybody who came today. We set out on this mission to recognize that Dreamers live in our community and give them the acknowledgement and the support they needed. I argued for a public hearing, and we got the public hearing. And I also ran into some opposition from the council and from the public that this was a federal issue that we shouldn't be voting on. and from the public that this was a federal issue that we shouldn't be voting on. And last week, we had a public hearing. We have thirty-nine people come forward and testify. I made a couple of mistakes there. One of those was saying that I would like to have another week so I could work on this item, and those should have all been "we" statements. Could we have another week so we, the city council, could work on those items? I feel like there's a lot of people in the audience who are expressing their dissatisfaction with the results of our work on that. I was able to get consensus from all seven city council people to write and submit a letter to our federal delegation asking that they move swiftly to protect Dreamers from deportation, much like a resolution that's a symbolic gesture, but it's a unanimous symbolic gesture, and I think this will serve to show the world and our federal delegation that Lincoln cares about Dreamers and that we want them to live here in Lincoln in a safe environment.
Order, please. Ladies and gentlemen, we understand this is an emotional issue, but we would just ask that the, there's no more public hearing on this. We would just ask that you be quiet. Thank you.
Because of playing and bartering people's lives.
Sir, we'll have to insist that you be quiet or you'll need to leave the chamber. Thank you.
So you're not going to give yourselves a vote? Say you're not going to give them a vote.
Ms. Raybold?
You're not going to give them a vote. Just be honest, all seven of you, and say you're not going to give them a vote.
I have a staff question.
Of?
Legal.
Okay.
Legal staff question.
Thank you.
I'm hoping you could.
Don Taught, City Attorney's Office.
I'm hoping you could explain what a withdrawal of this resolution means, and then to supplant it with a letter from the city council. How is the letter from the city council properly recorded and acknowledged in the record?
Well, the record would, the clerk's office would have a copy of the record. Counsel, it would be reflected in the minutes of the meeting, so it would still indicate that the letter, I'm assuming, will be provided to the clerk's office for recording, and so that would make it basically an official record of the city, indicating that this body had unanimously, or all, I'm assuming, I've not seen the letter, as Councilman Shob has indicated. It's been signed by all council members, so I mean, it would certainly, to me, indicate that the body has provided its support in that regard for the intent stated in the letter, and so it would be part of the official records of the city.
So has the letter been signed by all city council members?
I haven't seen it. I don't know. I was assuming that it had been, based on what Councilman Shob's comments were.
I guess Chairwoman Lamb, has the letter been signed by all city council members?
I don't have the letter completely signed. There is one error that needs to be corrected on the page in order to have it signed, but my understanding is that it's been agreed to by all parties, so never have signed it. Mr. Camp?
You agreed to a vote, too, and you're denying us a vote. Let's be true to all.
Ma'am?
Order, please.
You're out of order. Please have respect for this body. Otherwise, you may leave the chamber.
Respect for the citizens of Lincoln by not lying to us two weeks in a row.
Please refrain from comments at this point in time. We have questions from the council, from members of staff.
This letter that Mr. Shob has put together is from each of us as individuals. It is not from the city council as a body, and therefore, it's not part of the record.
Stand up.
It's signed by all council members, correct?
Yes, it's from us as individuals.
But it's signed as council members, correct?
It's signed as members of the city council. I mean, to me, that might be splitting hairs, John. You know, I know, it's not a resolution, no, but it at least is expressing the intent of the members of the council signed as members of the.
As individuals.
If you're signing it as individuals, that's, if that's what it is, but.
It's not a.
It's not a formal action of the city council, if that's what you're driving at.
Well, no, it seemed to go in that direction.
I mean, yeah, it does indicate that it is as individual members of the Lincoln City Council.
But it still can be placed in the record of, in the city's office.
I just wanted to clarify that it wasn't from this body.
And that's fine. No, I mean, in differentiating it from a resolution, correct?
Any other questions? Any other discussion? Ms. Raybold?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank all who came out last week to testify in support of the DACA resolution. The fear, the anxiety, and the uncertainties the DACA recipients and their families feel about their future here in our city and state are real. Your comments were profound, heartfelt, and persuasive. Truly, it was something we in Lincoln should be very proud of, the civil and truly respectful way your concerns were presented. I also want to thank the many emails I received in support, and those, some of those against the city council for taking this issue up. We hear you. We on the city council have always been upfront and quite clear that we do not have the statutory authority to change federal laws. However, it is imperative that we as citizens, as residents, as elected officials, communicate and provide direct and insightful feedback to our state and federal officials, so they understand what matters to our constituents that we are elected to represent, that it matters to our economic well-being of our city and its residents, that our state and federal officials understand how much our three thousand four hundred DACA recipients, our Dreamers, have contributed to our economic well-being and growth of our workforce, and how we have invested in their education. Judge Gradwell, in her legal summary, states, "We on the city council have the authority to urge our federal representatives to take action on this matter." Let me also be very clear on another concern that was raised. This issue of protecting Dreamers in our state who qualify for in-state tuition and now championing to keep Dreamers from being deported has always been critically important to our community, when I was a citizen or when I was on the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners, or now on the city council. I want to share with you some comments from constituents that I have received. Some believe the council should not address matters beyond its jurisdiction. Typically, this may be true, but the events of the recent weeks show that these are not ordinary times. When democracy is not working at one level, the people deserve to be heard in other ways. Another constituent wrote, "I would like to reiterate a point that several testifiers made, and that in a time when hateful rhetoric and policies are changing the climate of our country daily, words and actions, even if only symbolic, are more important than ever. As someone said, even small actions add up, and we all have to do our part and raise our voices in opposition to the intolerance that is taking over public discourse." This woman wrote, "I will speak out as an individual in all the ways I can think to do so, but I think it would be powerful to have the city council speak out as a body as well. I have always supported a letter and offered that to my colleagues on the city council before moving forward with the resolution, until they heard the testimony of so many, they were reluctant to even do that. I want to express my disappointment that my colleagues are choosing not to support this resolution as it is written and the message we should be sending to our federal representatives." The Lincoln Journal Star, in their editorial last year, in 2017, commenting on the state legislature action in support of a DACA resolution that did pass, but with twenty-five of the forty-nine senators listed as present not voting, they wrote, "The failure of so many lawmakers to support them, the Dreamers, in a manner as mild as a formal legislative resolution is truly disappointing. To deliver a weaker message from the one we clearly and profoundly we heard last week is also a disappointment, so I will be voting against withdrawing this resolution."
Any other discussion, the motion to withdraw?
Madam Chair, I'd like one more statement.
Mr. Shob?
Councilman Raybold, thank you for your words. I'd like to point out that this is on me. I am responsible for this. My fellow council people worked hard to make this happen, and I'd like to acknowledge there are more than ten people in the audience who are taking advantage of the democratic process and stating their dissatisfaction with this action. I'd like to thank you all for coming forward and taking part in the process. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Absolutely, and I would just like to make a statement. I realize that this is a, an incredibly emotional issue to a number of people, and we heard from a lot of people last week, and I took notes about just some of the issues that we were asked to address over which we have no jurisdiction, and there has been a great concern that we not weigh in on those particular, on issues that are not within our jurisdiction, and for good reason. We had at least eight that I took note of, and I'm not sure that I got them all. We were asked to instruct LPS to restrict its tax growth to the growth of students. We were asked to address ending family separations. We were asked to dismantle ICE. We were asked to support comprehensive immigration reform. We were asked to expand access for healthcare to all. We were asked to pass a resolution and submitted to us from the Nebraska Democratic Party. We were asked to instruct local law enforcement not to work with immigration authorities at the federal level. We were asked for a, that the council quickly adopt, or, excuse me, urge our legislators to quickly adopt legislative policy protecting the unborn in Nebraska. For that reason, I will, I believe that the letter is a good, a good, nice compromise, and I will say that I never got a copy of a letter prior to this legislation being introduced or had opportunity to sign this letter, although I did suggest a letter at some point when I understood that this was being introduced as just the vehicle to show that we do have concern for those in our local community, but to not overstep our bounds and to open up this huge wave of things just like we saw at this, at this dais last Monday night. So I will support the motion to withdraw. Teresa, would you call the vote on the motion to withdraw?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gayler Beard?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
No.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried seven, six to one.
Thank you. I'll return. Take gavel to.
No representation. No vote for Dreamers. No representation. No vote for Dreamers.
Thank you, Jane Raybold.
Please, please refrain from.
No vote for Dreamers. No representation.
Thank you for attending tonight.
No vote for Dreamers. No representation.
Our resolutions.
Turn the gavel to the chair.
Madam Clerk, do you have the name of that woman who was shouting just now from last week's testimony?
We can sure find it for you.
That, you know, we do that after, yeah.
Our resolutions on first reading are items nine A through I. Our ordinances on first reading are items ten A and B. Our pending list are items twelve A through C. Anyone wishing to address the council on a matter not on this agenda and not plan to appear on a future agenda may do so at this time, since it is an open microphone night.
Open microphone night. Now's the chance to come up and tell us what you think, as long as it's not on the agenda or a future agenda. Would anyone like to come forward?
Seeing no one coming forward, I would make a motion to withdraw.
Wait.
Oops, sorry. Motion to adjourn? Oh, we have someone, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Ms. Quintero?
Hi, my name is Isabel Solis. Do I have to give my address and stuff?
Yes, please.
I'm at six six five Sumner Street, proud renter in the South Salt Creek neighborhood. I also work for the South Downtown Community Development Organization, and I'm here as part of our work alongside with renters together to keep the affordable housing issue on the minds of our city council and our city government. So I'm here today to ask the City of Lincoln to develop an affordable rental housing plan to focus on the affordable housing crisis and the lack of supports that would help renters thrive in affordable, quality housing solutions. In the south of downtown area alone, which spans from Eighth Street to Eighteenth Street and from H Street to A Street, ninety-four percent of the housing units in this area are rental. While the City of Lincoln has been doing a fantastic job with tackling the problem of homelessness through the Homeless Coalition, which recently celebrated the dramatic decrease in homelessness since their hard work started, and the city also has programs and partnerships with organizations to increase access to homeownership, these are just two extremes in the spectrum of those affected by the affordable housing crisis. The city is actively working on ending homelessness and providing support for those who wish to own a home, but these solutions leave out thousands of people who are renters, who don't fall into either of these extremes. The City of Lincoln needs an affordable rental housing plan that would address the needs of renters in maintaining health and safety without sacrificing affordability through incentives, housing development requirements, and funding to support renter households. I want to emphasize that the affordability of housing, specifically rental housing, remains key in the City of Lincoln. We've seen large developments happen in the Haymarket and the downtown area, and even in the Telegraph District. However, none of these developers had an incentive to make any of their housing units affordable to low-income persons, something well within the power of the city to ask for. We also currently do not have any protections for when, not if, these developments start expanding and spilling over to the community that already exists in the south of downtown area, displacing those who might not be able to afford to live here because of future gentrification that, at this point, seems inevitable. Here are some statistics that show what we mean when we are talking about affordability. A family of four is considered in the very low income bracket at fifty percent or less of the area median income, which is the AMI. So in 2017, the AMI was seventy-two thousand dollars, so the VLI bracket for a family of four in 2017 was thirty-six thousand dollars or less. The price of rent is considered affordable if it takes thirty percent or less of a household's income. This would come out to about nine hundred dollars a month for this family of four. According to statistics from NIFA, the average market rate for a three-bedroom apartment is one thousand twenty dollars a month, pushing the limit of what is considered affordable by a hundred and twenty dollars. If the family wanted to squeeze, a two-bedroom apartment runs about seven hundred sixty-one dollars, affordable for the family. However, if we place this household of four at thirty percent of the AMI, extremely low income, making twenty-four thousand six hundred dollars annually, their affordable rental rate would be six hundred and fifteen dollars a month, not even enough for a two-bedroom apartment to be considered manageably affordable. These aren't just numbers. These are real situations that people live with even as rents are rising because of the developments occurring in the city. During the door-to-door conversations with neighbors in the south of downtown that I have as part of my work, many people tell me that their rents have gone up as they've lived there, with some people even expressing that if their rent continues to rise, they'll have to look for somewhere else to live. Disturbingly enough, residents, especially those who are low-income or non-English speakers, have also expressed their hesitancy to ask for more repairs, basic improvements, or report code violations and unsafe conditions for fear of retaliation by their landlords or increases in rent. An affordable housing rent, an affordable rental housing plan must take into consideration not just funding for vouchers or incentives for developers, but a wraparound approach that addresses new developments, existing housing conditions, and the financial hoops that residents have to jump through in order to be able to afford to live and exist somewhere.
One minute.
The affordable housing crisis is ongoing, and there is still time to salvage affordability for the south of downtown area as well as the city at large. The city has made great progress with homelessness and continues to help homebuyers on their path to ownership, but these solutions aren't addressing the large population of renters in our city. We hope to continue working and collaborating with community partners, as well as the city, to find solutions for affordable rental housing and creating and implementing an affordable rental housing plan that works for the City of Lincoln.
Thank you. Jane?
I have a question for you, Isabel. In your experience, what have other municipalities done? Have they formed a task force to, and involved the stakeholders to look into this issue of how best that municipality can launch forward together a plan for affordable housing, or what are you recommending that the city embrace?
It should be a mix of things. So I know in our research as a group, we've looked at TIP. We've also looked at inclusionary zoning, things like that, to kind of make sure that, you know, the affordable housing exists in a place, because there is no incentive for developers to make that happen. But as far as a, like, affordable housing task force, I'm sure they exist. I haven't really researched any. But another thing that we are looking into, especially with partner organizations, is creating an affordable housing coalition, and I brought that up to the homeless coalition last week, and they were very interested in having that be a subcommittee of their, of their work. Thank you.
Are there other questions? Thank you. Would anyone else like to testify at this open mic session? Going once, going. Are you coming? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Cassie Lotman. I'm at twelve twenty-five C Street. I was recently a renter and became a homeowner. I was recently a renter and became a homeowner. So I would concur that there's great support and affordability for homeowners in Lincoln. But I'm here on behalf of renters and people who don't have the means and the support from their family that I had to be able to purchase their own home. Rent is a valid choice that people make, and sometimes it's a thing people do by necessity. I would like to see the city continue to prioritize affordable housing. I know the city has looked into this in the past. It's outlined in the Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing document that we've seen. There's a lot of great action steps that the city has laid out. I would love to see some follow-through on that and some updates on the progress. The document lays out several different options for affordable housing that the city might look into. I'm wondering what the process is for finding out updates on the results of that analysis and... and how the public can stay more involved in what's going on. I will note that as the organization Renters Together, we have had conversations with people in the urban development department, and they have been very helpful. So I applaud the city for cooperating with us on that level. Some other policies that I might suggest are policies that encourage landlords to accept vouchers. We've heard that there are residents with vouchers but who can't use them because landlords won't accept them. From conversations I've had with landlords, it's perhaps because it's difficult to manage the bureaucracy related to accepting a voucher recipient. Could be something to look into. It's also a problem where if a resident who's using a voucher has their income go up, there's a cliff, just like there's a snap cliff, where they could lose their voucher all of a sudden and no longer be able to pay for their housing at all. So the voucher is not a stable source of rent as a landlord might like. This is something the... the city can consider. Finally, I would like to add that as the city continues to develop, we've continued to focus on the low-income and majority-minority neighborhoods in Lincoln, especially the areas south of downtown. I don't know if any of you take 8th Street to get into the Haymarket, like I do every day for work, but it's bad. And it's been bad for years. I encourage the city to look at how we can make roads like that and the infrastructure in low-income communities a bit more stronger. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane.
Are you referencing all the potholes there?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And they fill them in with... with like piles of sand, which makes it worse.
It's a temporary winter patch. You know, like from J Street Sa... oh, no, it's like G Street South on 8th, right?
Okay.
It's like a bouncing...
Yeah, yeah. If anyone's running on that for their reelection campaign.
Are there anyone else that would like to speak before the city council during open-mic? Ladies and gentlemen, if you want to, you can come on... you can get in the line and get in the queue. We don't bite.
My name's David Steager. One, S-T-E-A-G-E-R, 1511 Hartley Street. Hadn't planned on speaking tonight.
Welcome, David.
Came here with my son, working on citizenship in the community for his Boy Scouts. And listening to the two young ladies speak about affordable rent. I have two older daughters, mid-20s. Just wanted to comment that, you know, they've moved in and out of my house because they haven't been able to continually afford rent in apartments and houses in the city. So just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Would anyone else like to testify before the city council during the open-mic portion of our agenda?
Mr. Chair, now I would move for adjournment. And we should... Oh, too late. My goodness.
I can't say...
But you invited people to come...
I'll stop inviting you.
Come up front.
If you would like to speak before the city council, please come forward now, and after this young man finishes, take your turn.
I apologize that I wasn't up here earlier. I was suddenly struck by inspiration.
I understand. We do that to people.
Yeah. My name is Josh Beeman. I live at 5034... 5031 R Street. I recently moved in that area. I am also a renter. I am also involved with Renters Together, and I just wanted to come before you all and say that I recently moved to the city of Lincoln about three years ago from Sacramento, California. And I really enjoy... I really enjoy here much more than I actually did in my hometown. And I'm fortunate enough to be able to have a job in which not only can I afford to have a decent apartment, but I can actually afford to go and do other things. And the majority of my income isn't actually going towards my rent, so I can actually go and have a life outside of that and do other things. And I know that I'm fairly fortunate in that aspect. And there are a great many people in this city that do not have that luxury. So I would encourage the city to listen to what the people that came here for Renters Together were saying and prioritize working with us and working with any organizations or any plans that you have to really prioritize making affordable housing something that can really happen for the people of Lincoln.
Thank you. Should I ask? Does anyone else would like to testify before the city council? Mr. Freeman, I thought you were coming there for a second.
I move adjournment.
Second?
A motion by Roy, and second by Cindy to adjourn. Would you call the roll, please?
Eskridge?
Yes.
Gaylord Baird?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Camp?
Yes.
Christensen?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you all for coming. I appreciate you being here.